And I look at Jaime Correa, and he was well grounded. I mean, I look at that as an example of somebody who, with all of their credentials, is going to do exactly what you said.
But what was the effectiveness? That's the -- we have to examine, was it even effective? It was a nice exercise for us, but wasn't effective.
But look how effective it's been. This community has flourished. Look how effective it's been.
Hurricane Charlie, to be honest, what we call Saint Charlie. Saint Charlie brought us insurance money. So the insurance money came and refreshed all that was left standing. And after our code changed, those people, other people with Northport. But I'm saying what we see here is a result of a whole lot of insurance money that came downtown at one time. That's where most of it came from.
I'm being very patient here.
Yes, you are.
I've had my hand up for a while.
And now he's got his hand up.
You used to hit me. I don't hit you. Okay.
Go ahead, Gary.
I think we're talking about too much minutia here right now for the discussion we should be having here today. What I hear here is more agreement than disagreement. I think that all of us agree that we would like to -- that our goal is to preserve the historical character in a more modern tone, because it's going to be new stuff that we're hoping will be -- come in here. I think that the ultimate goal that we've been discussing, whether it's about this or whether it's about using Aqua and the rebranding and the other issues, is to maintain -- and when we start talking about what's going on in the county, is to maintain leadership for our own little community. That's the ultimate goal here, is how to get there. And we need a consultant to help us develop that plan. And then we have to have the consistency to maintain that plan and evolve that plan as it goes. We were having this discussion before we knew Sunseeker was going to be there. Sunseeker is going to be there. That has an effect, depending on how you ask the question. It could be positive or negative, depending on who you are. That's not our job. Our job is to do whatever we can to help find the path to guide our community to be this vibrant, wonderful community that we enjoy right now, to temper the bad things and to augment the good things. And that's what I think we need the expertise for in how to develop that. That's why we need a strategic master plan. And to me, the word strategic is more important than the master in the title, because it's a living type of document. I go back to, what was done in 2005 was absolutely great, but the follow-up, from the city's perspective, faltered. We have to go into this -- you talk like this. Give me a couple more minutes.
Okay.
I love you dearly, but you know. Where we faltered was not the continuous evolutionary execution of that, because technology changes.
And the economy tanked.
And the economy changes. And the world changes. And we want to be able to maintain our certain flavor, but at the same time, we still have to change with the world. So I'm going to share one quick, and then I'll get off my -- one quick story. My grandpa, may he rest in peace, was a farmer in southern Illinois. He was a dirt farmer. He was a very humble man. I went to school 60 miles north of his farm, and I used to love visiting with him on the weekends. And I was of drinking age at the time and was sharing a little bit of rye with my grandpa. And my grandpa said to me, he said, "Gary, I really feel sorry for your generation." And I said, "Grandpa, what are you talking about? Why do you feel sorry for my generation?" He says, "You won't get to see the change in the world that I got to see." Now, from his perspective, he went from outhouses to indoor plumbing. He went to a tractor that had an air-conditioned cozy camp, and he got to see a man on the moon. And he didn't think that I would be able to see the same amount of change. Well, the reality is, is when we're gone, that change is still going to be happening here in Punta Gorda. And the question is, is how do we provide the path so that the historic flavor can be maintained, but that Punta Gorda can evolve and change with the changes that we're going to see in the world? Whether it's global changing, whether it's going to be an increase in water, or whether it's going to be changes in technology, et cetera. That's really what we're talking about here. We can talk about these little -- but we need -- what we need as a body, I believe, is to establish and go forward in finding the direction of the path, and we need expertise to help us do that. Okay.
Yeah, just one, yeah, just one more. Just your comment about the insurance money, Jaha. You're right. Charlie brought about a lot of funds. It was, how do we use those funds? How do we -- and the contribution of the master plan helped, actually helped staff guide discussions with developers on the redevelopment. They were going to actually replace the old building that was, that is where the Sunloft Center is now. But it's because of the new urbanism and that kind of thing that was brought about by the Citizens' Master Plan that enabled the discussion to build a different building and to change the --
And they've been dying until this month. And that's what I'm saying. We have to hear from business people about whether it's effective or not.
But the build, it has helped our community. And look at the --
Right, and they've been carrying us.
And look at the event center.
They've been carrying us.
The event center is another example of what has -- that was going to be moved, could have been moved, but it's here. And then it's -- what it looks like was, you know, and we can go on and on and on with how the Citizens' Master Plan has helped this community.
But we can't not acknowledge that our citizens have actually carried the community. We're -- see, and I'm saying we're afraid of information. If we were to put that master plan with the Aqua study, with the business people's perspective, now we have a picture. Because right now, we're talking about the plan as if it was done on its own, and that people themselves didn't invest capital, and they just didn't risk it the last 15 years. Because if we don't acknowledge what our people have actually contributed to the city to keep it where it is, then our whole way of planning is really not going to be right. We have to acknowledge everyone who made the city what it is right now, and there's a big piece that's missing, and we're not acknowledging them. We're like ducking and dodging, not trying to acknowledge them. We need to -- if we put those three pieces together, then I think we have something to work with. We really can have a strategic plan, but we have to acknowledge it.
We're all saying that, Jaha.
So what is --
I think we're all saying that.
So what is your suggestion on how to do that?
Well, I mean, like that, a workshop for that part is simple, just like how any kind of standard council workshop, and everyone I've talked to would do it, basically where we invite people to speak to provide testimony to us, and we discuss amongst ourselves. And that's just where it is. I think it's a very simple process, but I think without doing that, we're not being honest. And when I say like, the Sunloft is a very good example of someone who took the plan seriously. They invested all the money, built it exactly the way the plan said, and they were rewarded with tremendous loss of money for it. And I'm saying that we actually need to hear people's perspectives so that we can make sure our plan is, from this point forward, we have something effective that's good for all our people as well, not just good in our perception of ourselves.
And really, from what I've heard too, with the change in the building codes, it's iffy of whether that building could be built the same way with the residential, as far as being on the ground. I mean, the Spring Hill Suites, you know, they weren't able to put up the gates.
No.
I mean, you just supposedly, you can't, I mean, I don't know. That's a building official question. Is that allowable now? So really, the change in the building code too has changed.
And that's, and they want to comment on that. That's the main thing I want to talk about, is they want to come, because the conversation began as the code. If they can simply share their perspectives on what our 2005 code did for business, we would then have some guidance on where we need the place in terms of architecture and things like that. And I think that we're operating in ignorance unless we involve them.
I think that the all is a part of this process. And I think if we hire the right consultant, that'll all be a part of this process. Absolutely. We have to consider all of the positives and the negatives of where we've come and what --
But the order of it is very important. I think before doing that, we're insulting our people, whether we don't do that part first. Secondly, again, I've never heard of a process, and I've been around a lot of design stuff, where you don't have an expert do drawings first, and then you comment on it. I've never saw a situation where you have people just throwing stuff in the air. That's just not how it's done. If we're serious about doing something well, you have architects do preliminary drawings based on, you know, you say, "I want to see this," and they draw it for you, and then you're good at business. They're going to do what they're going to do, not just having this stuff.
You had something to say.
Yeah, I don't really want to engage in the policy discussion.
Okay.
But the item on the agenda is the drafting of the request for proposal. And I've understood in the conversation that the draft didn't really address the way, it wasn't drafted the way you wanted. And my only question to help us do that is simply this. Is there anybody or any communities that you're aware of that were in our situation right now, that wanted to have a proposal and experts to help to ultimately draft, that was successful, in your opinion, that we could then go take a look at what their request for proposal was and model our request similar to that, if that was a successful process?
There is, but unfortunately, when I throw the name out, people aren't going to like it. City of Fort Myers. They hired a very nationally renowned urban planning architectural firm called Duanee, and very well renowned. And what you have in the core, forget about the tie rises, we're not talking tie rises, but the core downtown of Fort Myers is a very walkable, a lot of residential there. There's a vibrant commercial sector. And that was all done through the selection of a, like a Jaime Correa, Duanee, they're out there.
Right. Do you think that the request for proposals that led to that would be something that we could rely, that we could use as a guidance?
Let's make sure we hear.
Good point.
I mean, the end result isn't really what we're concerned about the moment, because we can certainly, the council can change elements that are just, that they don't like. But right now, we're talking about drafting a request for proposal that the city council can buy in on.
One thing also with that, they also have a very robust downtown redevelopment group.
They do.
I think if you put those two, and this is a good idea, those two, if we look at theirs and we also acknowledge we do have to have someone with that mind as part of this process. We can't like not make that go away because we don't like the thoughts of it. If we want, if we're serious about this, I think that's a good idea.
And one thing that came out of my discussions with Donna and with Mitchell about Main Street, Punta Gorda, like, we did all that. That was directed in the master plan, and we did all that. There were issues with it, and it ended up going away. It wasn't executed to the, you know, 100 percent, I would say. I was in at the very tail end, and so I can't really judge the whole length of it, but it wasn't executed the whole way. But really, the difference, and it was a good suggestion, but the, what came out of our conversations with Mitchell is that Main Street is there to do that, fill the blighted spots, to take those buildings, like in downtown Fort Myers, where they have these beautiful historic buildings and do the gentrification. We have empty lots. And so I think what we need to do is really concentrate and get the person or whoever, firm, to really be concentrated on really new development, because it's new, new buildings. We don't have a bunch of old historic buildings downtown that we're trying to revitalize. And most of the downtowns that are Main Street, that are successful with those programs, that's what they have. And so that's what the goal is, is to, you know, get somebody to buy in and gentrify and, you know, which is what really happened in downtown Fort Myers. So we really need to keep that in the back of our mind too, is that we don't have a bunch of empty space that we're trying to fill. It's, we're talking about new development.
Yeah, it is a little different. You're correct. You're correct. There's a --
I think --
I don't know, I'm concerned, I don't know what we're going, as a staff, we're going to come back with.
I think we know what we need. I'm listening to this discussion, and I know our staff well enough to know that to take this next step. We can clean up this document that was a good start, but take out a lot of these and simplify this and come up with something that's just a much more streamlined document. And --
And I would say even include the draft changes to the LDRs in there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So it's in there as a framework.
We also indirectly refer to the 2005 Citizens' Master Plan, but it's not specifically stated in there that it's referenced. So I would like to include that as well, because I think that's, that was a supporting document that should be included as part of the text of this RFP. I'd also like to see some of the ideas incorporated from the group that spoke earlier, Smarts and Growth Punta Gorda. There are a lot of folks in that group who are working together to try to help the city and provide input to the city. I would like to see some of those ideas incorporated into it as well.
Sure.
There was an email that was shared with, I believe, all council members.
Yeah, it was.
So, you know, maybe some of those ideas can be incorporated into the RFP. But I think that those are important things, because that's what's got people buzzing in the community. And I think having that involvement will also foster a lot more support for the ultimate end result plan. And I think that it'll allow the citizens to make, make them feel like they're part of the decision-making process. I think it's a really big deal.
So you made a motion.
I'll withdraw that motion, but what, but I will make a motion to, I'll mention a motion that we schedule a council workshop with business people. That's, I mean, I can be cool with this if we do that. I just find that the process is ridiculous otherwise, because if we don't have people's perspective that can reflect on the last 15 years about what our code has done to them, or done for them, or done against them, this is all nonsense, otherwise. We're just operating in the dark and want to have some guy come who doesn't know anything, basically, and we're going to start making plans again, some idealistic stuff based on some urban design ideologies, when we really need to know in our specific Punta Gorda environment, what our environment is like. I think if we don't get that, this is nonsense.
I could be okay with that.
I think that needs to be a part of the process.
It has to be prerequisite, otherwise we're playing with ourselves. We're really not acknowledging our people, we're not taking care of our people. And we're, I can't be with it unless we take care of our people first. We have to assess what our people have been going through over the last 15 years. Otherwise, this is nonsense. We have to know where we are first.
So you, that was your motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
So you got something to write down?
We're going to schedule a business workshop, a special council meeting and a business workshop.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to that. I think it needs to be a part of this.
Yeah, I agree.
It needs to be inclusive in this. It is, it is a part of the input.
Right.
It's a part of the input of what worked and what didn't work. That's why it's a part of this and not separate and distinct from.
We do it first.
It won't be, because it will still be incorporated.
Yes, it'll be incorporated. It'll be part of the plan, exactly like you're saying.
That's why I'm against it, so, but.
Okay. Any more on that topic?
Yes, I think that we need to --
Well, we need to come back, we need to come back with a scaled down --
Well, can you, can we have somebody research the Fort Myers RFP?
And there's other communities.
Yeah, find a couple.
There's Seaside, Florida. There's Seaside, Florida.
That would be great.
There's a bunch of other communities.
We're not even talking about the RFP here. We're just talking about the, over --
Scope.
The scope here.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Just what to include in a scope that's incorporated into an RFP. We can do a little research on some other places.
Fine.
There's a lot of other communities out there.
I would like to also make a request that we develop a list of criteria of what we're going to be looking for from the, from the firm that we hire. I think that's an important part of it. Now, is I'm correct in assuming that city council will have involvement in selecting the firm?
We already said we want to do interviews.
Yeah.
Didn't we say that?
City council is going to interview and select the firm.
I think that's important as well, so.
And that will be public meetings?
Yeah.
People can come and comment and see the proposals ahead of time?
That's good.
Just like a regular agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Has anybody changed their mind on that?
No, I think that's a good --
The scary part is not knowing the dollar figures until the whole thing is over. That's scaring me.
Yeah.
Can we talk about the RFP for the Gilchrist Park Activity Center as being part of the funding for this? I mean, I --
Isn't that a separate funding? That's a separate --
I don't think it should be. I think it should be part of this, because it should be part of the overall planning process for what needs to be developed going --
But that's a very specific thing with a landscape architect that --
So a city marketplace.
No, but this is, it had its own plan before. I have, I just leave it where it is, because we have to bring that back and discuss it later.
Yeah, I would say leave that. I think that's a very unique spot.
I don't, I think it's redundant. It's a part of the --
Yes, Gary.
No, no, you are first.
I know.
I think that the vision that we talk about needs to be in totality of the city of Punta Gorda, not just Market Center. It needs to be east of 41. It needs to be PGI, BSI, Seminole, whatever. I think that we need to look at this in a holistic manner, ultimately. And so as a result, our park system is part of that. I don't care whether it's the Activity Center we're talking about or Henry Street. Let's see, there's my friend Gary's out there.
Then we can go all the way down to Ponce. I mean, that's a big scope.
That's my point.
That's a huge scope.
But that Citizens' Master Plan included that.
That's my point. That's the community.
I think one other point is that, you know, we haven't really incorporated any of the input from the boat club or the groups that meet at the YMCA necessarily. I've met with the folks from the boat club, and we've talked about all the renovations that have to happen on that building, and they don't want to move forward with doing what's necessary to keep the building in good running order, because they don't have a long-term lease. So we should be working with all of these groups to try to make it an inclusive project. And I do think that the Gilchrist Park Activity Center should be folded into this.
We already voted on a landscape architect doing that.
I know that.
Because that's a different way, that's what I'm talking, that's the order, the different order. That's where professionals give professional advice, and we have choices. See, we still haven't made our minds whether or not we're going to do that order.
I understand that. That's not what I'm saying.
That's something we voted on, and it's good where it is.
What I'm saying is that we, I know we voted on that already, but we haven't, we haven't implemented it. And I'm suggesting that since the Citizens' Master Plan has come up since then, that some of that money should be used toward the Citizens' Master Plan costs, because I think that's, we're hiring another firm that's going to be somewhat redundant at the, at the end result, so I'm --
That's only redundant if the philosophies are convergent.
Okay. We have to agree to disagree.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on the including? I mean, I think that's a really specific deal.
Like any other project, we might as well --
And we're right in the middle of a residential, becoming a very high-end residential neighborhood. We have to keep that in mind.
I don't think --
And even the older homes that are there, those people are putting a lot of money into restoring those older homes.
I don't think that we should procrastinate anything that we've got going. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is whatever we do relative to this master plan has to incorporate what we also, also what we have going on right now. But it has to be part of it. It can't just be, okay, we've already done that, so don't, that shouldn't be part of the master plan.
Right.
It needs to be incorporated into that.
I would, I would agree that it really could be folded into this, at least from a holistic view. And the Citizens' Master Plan did talk about the different areas of our community, so it would totally be --
But we might as well then include Harbor Walk Phase Two. I mean, we get ridiculous at that point. We're doing very specific projects, this is a very specific project. We might as well say everything should go stop until we do the master plan.
No, that's not what I'm saying, Jaha. I'm saying what we've got going on, we should continue going on. But when we bring this expertise in --
Oh, yes.
That expertise needs to be where this is going on.
Yes.
And they need to incorporate that into where we're going.
Of course.
I'm not saying that we should tear the sidewalk up that we just poured. That's not what I'm saying at all.
So with a future council meeting, we are going to bring back to you a scope and a draft RFP for the Activity Center, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
Well, for the park, that's, it was Activity Center slash park.
Yeah, but that area.
Because how do we word it? Yes, it's important.
Yes. Anything else? Well, that didn't take long at all. New business. We don't have any. Recommendation from city officer, city manager.
No, we know what's coming up in June.
Which is?
Want to go over the list?
Yeah.
We're going to bring you the drainage contractor. We're going to bring you the restroom bids for the playground, the utilities budget, the canal maintenance budgets. We've got the burnt store aisles assessment for undergrounding coming up. We may have, and I say may, either June or July, if we can't get it done, it'll be hopefully August, a land purchase contract for the cut-through. We may, we may. But that's got to go in front of council as well. And what did I forget? Anything?
Not for June. I mean, we'll have other funds to go over going forward in other meetings, but that'll probably be July.
Okay.
And I am correct that we only have one meeting in July, right?
Two.
They're the first and second meetings.
July 3rd and July 12th.
The first and second week, sorry.
July 3rd and July 12th.
No, July 11th.
July 11th.
July 3rd is a Tuesday, and I'm sorry, July 11th, thank you, is Wednesday.
Okay, so July 3rd, Tuesday, and July 11th, Wednesday. We have two meetings in July.
July 3rd, we will do a lot of the budget preparation work for when you set the tentative millage on the 11th. And at the July 11th meeting, our interim finance director will be sitting here for that.
Okay. And just one other item that you'll be seeing on the next council agenda is that Smugglers Events have asked to waive the park fees for July 4th, because apparently, when we approved that the last time, it was just for the last year's event. So that will be coming back to you as well. That's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah. We're going to keep you busy.
We do work in June here in Punta Gorda. City attorney?
Nothing for --
Nothing? City clerk?
Yes, just very quickly, under boards and committees, under vacancies, we have a three-year term on the burnt store aisles canal advisory committee. And then under appointments, there are your voting forms.
Do you have interested people on, do you have resumes from people? Do you know?
For --
The burnt store aisles.
Yes, I. That is actually just an end of term for Mr. John Four, and he would like to be reappointed, so we do have the incumbent.
Okay.
Okay, so this is for an alternate on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. We have three eligible applicants. I mean, I'm just going to mention it.
And the appointee is Mr. Williams.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Under policy and legislation, I do not have anything. So we'll go with council member comments. We'll start with Gary.
Okay. I only have, just because I'm allowed to talk to this, the property on Tripoli was sold, as was pointed out. However, there hasn't any been thing happening there yet. I would just say that if there was a groundswell of interest from the neighborhood and/or I would just say that if there was a groundswell of interest from the neighborhood and/or community, that we should take a shot at it.
Tripoli?
The Whippoorwill trial?
The Whippoorwill. I'm sorry. I said Tripoli. I meant Whippoorwill. I knew what I meant.
I can't believe they only paid $95,000 for that.
That's my point.
I, I...
That's my point.
I would have bought it for that much money.
I'm just saying, that's my point.
I would, I mean...
Just because it's sold, it's, it might be, it's something that, it might be an asset for the city to consider if there's a, if there's a, an interest in the neighborhood and community to take a shot at it and offer the guy a quick profit and we still didn't pay 500,000 or 200,000 dollars?
The chatter on the street is that he's planning on putting three houses on it, but I don't know how true that is.
But he hasn't started anything yet.
The record hasn't changed yet in the tax appraiser site, so like, I don't...
I'm just, I'm just saying is if there was a groundswell in the community and they wanted to go for it and, you know, there might be something that could be, that could be, that could happen. We shouldn't just write ourselves off that quickly.
Was there not a for sale sign on it?
There was at one point. And then the lawn guys knocked it down and it never came back. So, but, but the property, I spoke to a very reliable Realtor who told me that the property was sold on April 30th for $95,000.
Yeah, but that property doesn't have water or sewer yet. So, you know, there's gonna be developmental costs and maybe it might be something that, you know, he would get pause if he, you know, get his money back plus, you know, a nice little profit.
I'll keep my ears and eyes to the grindstone and see what I can find out about it. And if we can find out who owns it, then maybe we can entertain a dialogue about it. Yeah.
I just don't think we should. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I wish everybody a great weekend and we'll see you in next month.
Nancy?
Nothing today. Have a great Memorial Day weekend. I know we have a lot of different observances coming up.
Yes.
Just a couple of quick things. I think you all got the email that I forwarded from Gary Harrell at the MPO about the Nesbit Street intersection. I'm sure that Dr. Constance isn't gonna like the findings of the FGCU committee, but I'm very, I'm very pleased at what they've come up with. For those who don't know what we're talking about, there was a recommendation to change the configuration of traffic flow at the Nesbit and East Marion Street intersection. And Dr. Constance from the county commissioners had asked that the right turn on Red be revoked so that people could turn right off of Nesbit getting onto East Marion because the traffic backs up. But we had a group of students from FGCU who did an evaluation of the intersection and came up with some findings. I don't, can we make that available on the website?
Sure.
There's a, there's a report that was generated from it. And what they, what they recommend is that we take the on-street parking going northbound on Nesbit from Marion and make that a straight-through lane coming straight across Nesbit. And then make a straight-through lane going southbound in the center lane and a right-turn-only lane coming off of Nesbit coming southbound. So anyway, we'll try to get that report on the website for anybody that wants to see it. But that was a recommendation that they made. That will be, of course, subject to FDOT signing off on that once and for all. But that was something that the FDOT was working with the MPO to, to get done for quite some time. And I'm happy to see the report. And also, I went to the wrap-up party for the block party last night, a wrap-up meeting, I should say, for the block party last night. And they wanted me to express their happiness and appreciation to the city for all the cooperation with the block party this year. And it was a hugely successful event and they wanted me to give you this, which are some photos from the event. They've already started the planning for next year. And they thanked the police and fire for doing all the work that they did. The fire truck actually came in and hosed the streets down after the garbage was all picked up to make sure that the streets were nice and neat and clean the next morning. So they were very thrilled and they wanted me to express appreciation to everyone on council and staff.
Thank you. Jahah?
Did you just remind her that the Emancipation Day celebration at Blanchard House, it starts at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday?
Thank you. Citizens' comments, any topic? Please make your way to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes.
Again, for the record, my name is Connie Cantor. I live at 1318 Colombian Drive. I'm hesitant to make a comment, but I feel so compelled. I was a one-term wonder on our school board from 2000 to 2004. And I want to speak to the issue of your master plan. We went through a major, as did all of our community, a major restoration, renovation, the whole thing with our school district when Charlie hit. And we started with citizen comment. It was the best thing we did. Took us months. We interviewed everybody. And the thing about a school district is, everybody thinks because they went to school, they know how to run a school, they know how to run a school district, they, but it's very complicated. Everything's predicated on the bus schedule. Most people don't know that. But the bus schedule runs everything. So we did, we went to every school. We did the religious community. We did the nonprofits that use our facilities after schools. We interviewed thousands upon thousands of people with post-it note after post-it note after post-it note. It took us months to assimilate that data. But we had a really good run with our school district after that. It was amazing that the professionals then could take that information and say, we can make this fly. This, this idea's a dog, but we can make this idea fly, something we never even thought about. So it kind of sounds like your conversation is chicken or egg. Do we, do we talk to people first or do we ask the professionals to come up with a plan? You bring a professional in from outside of our community, they don't know us. That's like these absentee owners of so much of our businesses in town and so much of our property in town. They, they, they aren't successful because they aren't a part of our community oftentimes. So as a spokesperson for the people, that's what we all are as elected officials. And boy, you hit the nail on the head when you talked about Florida being very different. Everybody thinks that, you know, school board members shouldn't be paid in the state of Florida. Being a school board member in Florida is totally and completely different than it is in any other state in the Union except maybe Hawaii. But we're, we represent the community. We represent the people as elected officials. Start with them first.
Sherry Lenora, and I am with Smart Growth Ponte Gorda. And to the master plan, thank you for allowing it to come back with a revised RFP. I think the part of the process here is kind of being misunderstood. We are, the people who will be chosen have to be experts, urban planners, architects, as well as having charrette training. Because right now, we have three entities. We have the government, we have the citizens, and we have the business community. And frankly, we're not talking to one another. And what the charrette process will do is hire a facilitator to allow us to talk together to see what our plan is for this city for the next 10, 20 years. And that is what is needed. Fort Myers had their plan, I've looked at it, gave us, gave them a great walking, very vibrant downtown. They have high-rises other places, but not in the downtown center. And that is exactly what we need in Ponte Gorda. The 2005 plan gave us so much more. They gave us plans, parks, they gave us a vision. They gave us our convention center. And this, this new master plan will hopefully give us all sorts of new gifts that we can work through. And I want to point out that there is a National Institute of Charrettes. And they have a template for an RFP proposal. I suggest that perhaps we might want to look at that. They suggest that post-charrette, that they, the things that should happen are that the result should be communicated via social media, the media, and public meetings. And that the person who's hired completes a feasibility study of all of those charrette documents that are provided and provide draft resolutions of the charrette document. So they're going to be looking at how feasible is some of these things. Some of them are gonna get tossed out. Then they're gonna draft, they should draft a report, including the project, the process, and the plan, and how, hold town meetings, get it, publish in the newspaper, through social media, to tell, to say, this is what we came up with. From there then, they go, the next step is those enabling documents, which are the plans, the codes, the standards. And finally, the last step that they recommend is that they have a training with the staff so that they can say, here is what the citizens and the business community and the government want together. Here is how you need to go about it. So we're not talking about people just talking off the top of their heads. We're talking about people who are passionate about Ponte Gorda, but we're also talking about people who are planners, who are developers, who are business people, who are architects, who are facilitators, and that is what we need. So thank you for coming back with a revised RFP.
Citizens' comments, any topic? Please come behind Ms. Mueller if you want to speak.
Always scares me when you know my name. Wendy Mueller, down Historic District. I want to comment on the strategic plan. One of the things that wasn't adopted at the 2005 plan, if you read through it, is that there was supposed to be a five-year review every five years. It wasn't done. Or it would have been alive. And that's a mistake and should be included in your future plan. I think you'd still be working with the 2005 plan, called 2019 now, if you had revised it or reviewed it every five years. I have one other thing to say, and that's simply that experts listen and then they act. Experts, I'm sorry, experts guide from their gathered information and from their opportunities. And then they give advice. You cannot be an expert if you don't have the information first.
Anybody else? Line up. Stand up. I see you, but I'm, I'm talking to them. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I think the horse has probably taken his last breath, so I'll keep this brief. Lisa Wager, I'm gonna take off my, my team hat here and just talk to you like a real citizen. I lived in Detroit for many years and I was actually a business analyst. So Jahah, I get your point about, you know, doing workshops and all that stuff. And I understand about, you know, planning and if I, if I put that hat on for a minute, I can see where you're going with all that. And gathering data and information from professionals and best practices. And you mentioned things like, you know, new urbanism and urban design. And you gave an analogy of medicine, and medicine wouldn't just, you know, willy-nilly do stuff on the fly. They would, you know, conduct, you know, scientific, you know, they use science. So, and I get all that stuff. But I guess the one thing I, the point I'd like to make is maybe the thing that we're kind of forgetting is the personal aspect of all this. And the reason my husband and I moved here in December, we spent a year in Tampa and we looked all over the state of Florida. And we picked Ponte Gorda because of the way it is, not in spite of it, not because we thought, hey, we'd really like to see this little town grow into something different. We love it here. And we kind of don't want it to change all that much. We can see that there's room to grow and there's room for improvement, but it's not Detroit. It's not, it's not, I guess the point I'm trying to make is there's already a high quality of life. So, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.